July twenty first, two thousand twenty one. Mr. Moody, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes, good day. Dear gracious Lord, again thank you this day, thank you this time, thank you for the freedom, Lord, that we have in you, that your Son can die and forgive them for sins. Does it know your freedom, Lord, that they accept your grace? And, Lord, just thank you for our physical freedom, Lord, to men and women of our military. Lord, just thank you for them and bless them and be with them. Lord, thank you for our school, Lord, and our school board, and our teachers, Lord, and everybody that works here, our coaches, Lord, our kids. Thank you for giving us the honor and privilege to work with kids, Lord. We know they're special with your shot. And, Lord, is to give us the wisdom and guidance we need, Lord, to do what's in their best interest, Lord, not only at school, but after school, whether it's teaching, coaching, Lord, or whatever we do to help them, Lord, always helps us to be available, to be the servants we need to be for them. Thank you for all you do, Lord, so, Lord, you're the best, just in my prayer.
We have some special guests here today. Everybody's remain standing up, y'all are younger than I am, so. As Billy says, I'm ninety-five. Okay. We got the baseball part of the baseball and softball teams here, and they're gonna lead us in the pledge, and then I'm gonna have y'all tell me who you are, of course, I know most of you, but I wanna know where you're going to school, if you're going, and what you would like to study, and if the coaches, Brent, you and Billy, and Joanne, if you wanna say anything about these girls or boys, feel free, okay? All right, we'll do the pledge first.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Should I make them stand up?
I think you should.
I think y'all need to stand up, coaches and players. All right, let's start on the right front with Sarah, and go to the right, and then go to the back row, back this way, how's that? Tell us your name, what grade you will be in, even though I know most of you, and tell me what you would like to study, or if you go to the military, or going to vocational school, I don't care what it is, just let us know. Tell us a little bit about yourself, what you're interested in, okay? Sarah.
Okay, my name is Sarah Giddy, and I am a senior this year, and I want to go into pediatric oncology, and I'm not for sure where I want my program to be, but I would like to attend my school, I play sports.
Okay. Come on, shut this door. I'm dead. Go ahead, Hal.
My name's Hal Anderson, and I'm gonna be a senior this year, and I would like either to go into business or the medical field, I'm not very sure, I specifically do.
Do you know where you wanna go to school yet?
Um, I'd like to go to Jacklview.
Oh, okay.
My name is Gabby Hooker, I graduated this year, I'm going to Marvart, I'll play softball, and I'm gonna become a science and later become a physician assistant.
My name's Delik Farm, I'm a rising senior, and I would like to go to either UNC Jacklview or Muncie Charlotte and get my master's and a physician assistant.
My name's Cardard Schill, I'm an upcoming sophomore, I plan on going to school for physical therapy at Appalachian State University.
My name's Lightning Buchanan, I'm gonna be a junior this year, and I plan on going to Marvart.
I'm Jeff Shulman, I graduated this past year, I play baseball at Cleveland Community College.
Cleveland community?
Yes, sir.
Ats in Tennessee.
Ats in Shelby.
Oh, okay.
I'm Alex Knott, I'll be a rising junior this year, I'm interested in orthopedic area, medical field, I'm not really sure where I wanna study yet, but I'd like to go to UNC Jacklview.
Coaches, y'all wanna say anything about these young people?
I will, I'll put some stuff together.
All right, good.
To brag on them. The first thing I wanna do is mention the girls that couldn't be here, that are on our team, they are Ivy Odom, Patience Frapp, Henry Frapp, Abby Sawyer, Maggie Knight, Sidney Farley, Kinsley Phillips, Excuse me, Ainsley Think, Zoe Shuler, Ally Ayers, Taylor Jackson, Brooklyn Turpin. I'd also like to recognize the guy, the folks that helped me coach, my wife, Joanne, Sammy, and Michael Trammell, they coach our infielders, Brian Millsap's over there, he works with our pitchers, the ninety-five-year-old man, Coach Nelson, works with our catchers, James Keifer does our strength and conditioning, and myself, I coach outfielders and P. I wanna tell you some things about our team, what we've been doing. This year, they won the Smoking Mountain Conference for the fourth consecutive year with a record of thirteen and one. They are a finalist for the one A, two A Team of the Year in Western North Carolina, where we will be attending a banquet on August fifteenth at the Grove Park Inn, and that's like the fourth year we've been up for that award in a row or something like that. Since two thousand seventeen, they have a conference record of fifty-seven wins and four losses, and an overall record of eighty-one wins and twelve losses. We had four girls make all Smoking Mountain Conference this year, Maggie, who's going to Chattanooga State to play softball, Zoe Shuler, a freshman, Henry Frapp, a freshman, and Ivy Odom, a junior. We had three more girls make all honorable mention, Hallie Anderson right here, Gabby Hooker, who's gonna play, like she said, at Marvart, and Ainsley Think. Couple other things, Maggie and Gabby will become the seventh players since two thousand seventeen to receive a college offer to play softball out of this school. We're very, very proud of that. These girls also, people know that they work with our youth, our young girls, you know, they come to our practices, they work one-on-one with them, some of them also competing lessons at Brian's place down here on Main Street during off-season, which is really good. One other thing, softball's become very popular in our community, we've worked very hard to make Union Nichols Field the finest in the conference, but going forward, we would love to, at some point, have some restrooms for our fans, new turf and dirt, as well as lights, where more people can attend. Playing at four and four-thirty means a lot of people cannot come, or they have to take off work to come watch them play. It'd be nice if we could play later in the afternoon where more people could attend. And finally, I wanna thank you guys for allowing us to be here and recognizing these girls, and they are, we're very proud of them, and they do your community very proud.
Special ladies.
They are.
Great.
But I'll recognize what was saying here, we had Cole Patterson, Alan Moore, Rossi Wachacha, Kaye Garrison, Bryce Garrison, Ethan Babers, Hunter Jones. Kayden, Kayden Brock, Kevin Turpin, Cam Jordan, Ethan Orr. My other coaches, I'm gonna thank them, it was Michael Shuler, and Landon Farley, and Brandy Coby. And we ended up seven and seven this year, but the highlight was our last game, we beat Haysville, been undefeated, ranked number one in the state, I think that may be the first time all of football's ever been a number one ranked team, and when we go down, it's the first several losses, that'd be thanks to yourself. Thank you for letting us be here.
Thank you very much. And y'all can go.
Can I ask you a question before I go back to y'all?
Oh, yeah.
These, these lights that were taken off a football field, is there any way we could use those over on a softball, or?
I do believe that the county wants to use those for the red fields, but I'm not sure.
That's a good question, though, I didn't know that.
I just seen them laying around.
Yeah, believe me, if we thought we could use them.
You know, I can't figure out why the kids don't wanna stay for the financial stuff, that's, I mean, this is the fun part of the meeting.
I need a motion to approve the agenda for today. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? And I need a motion for the approval of the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one minute. Do I have a second? Okay. The floor is now open for public comment period. Do I have a motion to close the public comment period? Close. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, reports and discussion items, Angie from this night, two twenty-first century field trip proposed.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Teresa Hollfield, the twenty-first century summer program director, has requested that the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students of her program be allowed to take a trip to March twenty-second, so they'll be tomorrow, to the Lost Sea in Sweetwater, Tennessee. They'll leave at eight, they'll return, their plan is to return by two or three o'clock, and there will be eight chaperones with fifty-two students.
Eight chaperones, fifty-two students.
Do they just need permission from the board because they will be lost in state?
Do I, do I have a motion to approve the field trip to the Lost Sea in Sweetwater, Tennessee, for six through eighth grade students of Teresa Hollfield? There will be eight chaperones and fifty-two students, so that's about one for seven students, that's pretty good. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that was Hollfield, that you got. All right, personnel this night.
Yes, through post session, I will bring in several members for new personnel. I would like to ask Mr. DJ Robinson, he, he has a candidate for the language position at the school, this is over the Mr. Bannon, and he would like to introduce her, and during the post session, we might do, we're having a conversation, and later on, we can come back to you.
Can, can he introduce her now?
That would, no, I'd like to introduce her and present her as a candidate.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, DJ.
Sheldon Goddard, DJ Robinson, Dr. Noah Tutte, Dela Westing, Tutte Nole, Talagista Dukie, Dela working. Dela Boston, Wisconsin, huh? So I'm working for Snowbird Cherokee County as the Eastern Bend Cherokee's director for this area. So I'm here today, I just wanna introduce to you Ms. Kailene Curry Rockwood. But before I do that, I wanna give a little bit about my background and history, and I would also like to talk just briefly about what we're trying to do from a language perspective in Snowbird Cherokee County. So, of course, I went to Robinson High School, graduated from Robinsonville, went to Western, got a bachelor's degree at Western, came back, was a business owner in the community for a while, went back to Western, got a master's degree, and then started work with the tribe, and I've been with the tribe for almost, I don't know, ten years now. So, last year was my, or this past year was my first year at Snowbird Cherokee County Services, travels, you know, a weird time to commit with COVID and everything else going on, but I feel like we're really moving forward on our initiatives, we're moving forward on our programs. One of those that I really hope that we can push just in general is a language program, so we build out a language program and initiative in general for all of our community, but it also has key points for young people as well. One of those big, the opportunity to teach Cherokee here at the elementary school, which I really appreciate, and I appreciate you guys for allowing us to do that and share our language with everybody. Having said that, there is a gap at the middle school area, and I had initial conversations with Ms. Walsh to discuss her needs in those areas, she, she has voiced a request for us to work together to try to come up with a position for middle school, so that we can continue that language through the middle school area, because right now there's a gap there. But anyway, at the elementary school, we'll have Kailene, who'll be filling in and starting her work there, hopefully with our admission for, hopefully this given semester, do you want a second of the words and introduce yourself or something?
I'm curious, cause I'll be here in person, she has a daughter, Taya, a little girl, Creed, who named a little girl, high school student, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, hello, my name's Creed, I go by the little name Creed, Cherokee name is Taya, and the name is Cherokee, I'm twenty-six years old, and I'm from Cherokee, the yellow building. I've had ten-plus years' experience in the language, in some of the language programs at Big Oak and Cherokee, taken electives in middle school and high school, and in college. I graduated in two thousand eighteen from Western Carolina University, and after I graduated, I joined the call program, which is an acronym for Cherokee adult language learners. It was a two-year program where we were immersed in language for six hours a day, four days a week, with fluent speakers, and I'm a freshman, new graduate, we just graduated on the thirtieth of June. So I'm really glad to be here, and I report, and I'd like to say.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
I don't know whether you know it or not, but the Atlanta Braves had your chief down there the other day.
Yeah, I've seen that, and some of our speakers that were in the program with us were present.
And there were several, and they even had him in the booth talking on television.
Yeah, Roger, yeah, that's your name.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it, yes.
So, the call, the purpose of the call program that she graduated from in Cherokee is to, is to build language teachers, that's the purpose of that, what that program was built for, so this is sort of that program coming to fruition, as it were, you know, her being able to turn around and give that back to younger generation, and share it back to them, so. There'll be another personnel that comes with personnel file coming for you today, which will be Bo, James Bo Taylor, he's the manager of the language program. So, the language program, again, I told you, was built out, and it covers a lot of different areas, it covers adults, adult immersion, adult community, it'll cover the elementary school person, and potentially others that we build out as the time goes on for the language itself. He's a manager, so he would need sporadic access to the school, give her supplies, give her guidance, you know, help her in, with things that she might have, but he won't be here full-time, he won't be located on campus or anything like that, but just for your information, when that personnel file comes up. You guys have any questions for us, for program, or what we're looking to do?
Now, will she be working only with elementary students, K through five, K L?
And she's currently set as an activity position, so they'll, every student will see her throughout their time there in a given year, but some students may only see her for nine weeks, other students may see her every day or every other day, so she's just building as an activity block for home-based teachers. There may be opportunities down the road to refresh another bit, I wanna really give the students who are really wanting to learn the language, or to further themselves in the language, the biggest opportunity possible to do that, so it may be a larger time block for the third, fourth, and fifth, or something along those lines, but Jamie's been real nice to work with, so hopefully we can do something like that if the opportunity arises.
And so she'll be housed in the elementary program?
Yes, yes.
Getting a lot of her, yeah, it'd be a lot easier, teaching me for Cherokee language, you'd be beating your head off.
Yeah, well, my daughter, she's seven, and she, she picks it up as quick as I can put it out, so, and I'm thankful that we're able to teach all the people, not just tribal members, and the reason I say that is, for, for our language to survive, right now we're down to a hundred and eighty-six full speakers throughout the tribe, and then in Snowbird, that's down to like forty-seven, that's partial language, limited speakers, so the importance is on us now to really build out those programs and build them out well. So, it's important for us to get to them at a young age, and continue to give them the opportunity to learn if they, if they so wish, throughout high school and even after high school, so we're working through that, and hopefully we can get used to classes as well, the hope is that in Snowbird, it becomes Cherokee-first environment, Cherokee language-first environment. I stood up here today and tried to introduce myself to the members who can understand and conversate, we can't do that unless we teach everyone, so we're all like that.
They told me there's twenty-six letters in the English alphabet, and there's eighty-six in the Cherokee.
Yeah.
Count.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it is a hard language to learn, so, but I think, we've got the Katua program in Cherokee, we've got other language programs at the Central School, and they've all worked for years to develop the techniques necessary to teach the language, and new ones are coming out every day, so we're trying our best to find what works best for the grades that we're in, but.
My personally think this is great, and I think it's absolutely beautiful, and I was one of the ones in hospital, and I was like, they were very excited about it.
And it's really a wonderful opportunity for us to share this with all of our kids, and to be able to go to all of it, I'd like to go to Western, maybe some other universities, and continue the language, to that level.
Yeah, to add to that, I'm pretty sure North Carolina has, has allowed Cherokee as a foreign language, so when you go to college, you don't have to have Cherokee, and for North Carolina, it allows, it allows our language speakers to go into the North Carolina college system, to take like I did, two more years Cherokee language in college, so. Well, and like I said, hopefully we're able to put out that language courses, we're looking to, let's put online stuff to meet, to meet adult learners where they're at, and we'd like to make that, once we start that process available to all, so, you know, maybe, maybe next time I come in here, you guys will respond, you never know.
Thank you.
Not me.
Thank you.
DJ, you're, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
And you guys have my contact information, of course, Angie can, I mean, Miss Snott can get ahold of me anytime she wants to, so, if you need to follow up, just let me know. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ned, you got anything to say?
No, my only thing I've got to say is to, just to give a quick report on our arts and crafts camp, real physical this year, we first, probably thirty, thirty-two, I think, I think we're very good, you know, the faculty were fully, from six, six, eight, and twelve, but, you know, we had some weeks where we'd like a building and things every, like every week, every two weeks, and so, I just like, you know, some of the weeks, maybe you wanted a building, and then from the wood, we're, we're good. And by far, so, you know, some of the girls would be interested in the, so we basically didn't turn anybody, anybody down. And that's all I've got to report on.
Is your program, is the summer program open, or?
The album's still going, we got this week, we got this week, and the immersion program up here, the language immersion program, they have a play at the end of their camp, and they're making the, they're making the ribbon skirts for, for them to wear.
I'd like to get an invitation, they can see some of that.
Yeah, 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 well, at the end of the camp, we're hoping to bring everybody's, all the students back together with their products that they made.
I know you use one of those.
Yeah, yeah, and so, everybody can be invited for that.
When is that coming?
Uh, that'll probably be, probably maybe toward the end of next week, or the first of the week after that, because we've still got some of the skirts that they, they're still working on.
Mr. Long, if you let me know, I can give that out to the board, they're interested.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, all right, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to see you.
A couple things, Ned's really good to work with, with our schools, that's number one, number two, it's his birthday now.
Are you thirty-nine, Mr. Long? Mr. Moody sent me a note here, and he said, you look good to be thirty-nine years old.
There you go. Thirty-nine?
It's also Suzie's.
It's also Suzie's?
It's her birthday, Sue.
Okay, she's thirty-nine, too.
She probably not upset at me for saying that, but. She always give me a call every night on her birthday, every year.
Well, we appreciate all of that.
Appreciate all of it, that's great. Okay. Ms. Davis, for the education policy, second reading.
All right. The first one is policy thirty-two twenty-five, one parent family engagement, the last revisions from this policy were twenty-seventeen, and so it's, the changes contained in it now are to conform with every student's Succeeds Act, and then we talked about S, that's every student's Succeeds Act, and so it supports with that, and I, I don't think that, I think we were already on board, making the parent involvement committee, and just to make sure we're on board about parents, if you were English, if you're a primary language or you can't understand, all those requirements, and get to one other one, and that academic group achievement, that was added, that was made available in a readily accessible fashion to parents and students, on student academic achievement, okay? Then fifteen-ten, school safety, it was last amended twenty-eighteen, and the changes contained in this policy now have to do with COVID, and so, remember, you get around to doing policies, and it's sometimes after the fact, you are already in compliance with COVID requirements by the General Assembly and State Department of Education, but this states it for the school system to follow department that, you know, services, we call DHHS, and requirements issued by that department, so. Ms. Davis, if I may, and I'm just for the board's information, for the office regularly scheduled meeting, I have Beth Booth coming from health department to give us any updates in the morning, because we expect this, we have some additional guidance on whether we'd like to school to reopen, there is a webinar going on this morning.
And I have information on webinar that, that you can share with them, but there's been close session.
Okay, and then, and so we will, if that's more, if the public just finishes, we know some questions about, but she will be here for you to ask questions and answer any questions. And I think probably the office meeting, the hunker down, COVID requirements, you may even be required to have a special session, because the General Assembly pulled that state bill, I mean, pass bill, Senate bill, was sent, it's been due within six months, committee, and that was also in the term of working on this decision on COVID activity in the school, private test COVID in the school, so, none of the SCS coming on committee, however, the Secretary of Education's going to be, the end of this week, or it's maybe now, and they plan to issue some guidance, it's not gonna challenge the General Assembly, but will make get a little more, or what you said, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm just hoping they come out with something, I don't know, so. What, 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 the office? School, the, the, and some of the legislators, I know, asking for, is there a, we can back to local control, whether we will work with our local health department based on the prevalence in the pandemic and make decisions about, rather than doing like this statement, that will, for the whole state, so, I'll be here to see what, what you already found out from that webinar this morning, and then we'll go forward with what we know.
They have, they have made a decision, they still want to go up with the second names, that's why I'll share with you.
Remote participation of board meetings, twenty-three oh two, basically it's here to stay, it was a rarity about boards not meeting, or just maybe a person, a board member called in, or was questioned in the hospital, but remote participation is here to stay, we can keep the number of restrictions, such as how many contacts that can be done, and what type of emergency, and it, you know, reminders that, that has. And it, you know, reminders that, um, it has to be board's votes, um, and, um, the D, if you look at D, that's very critical, that's, that's a restriction on your electronic board meetings. D doesn't date. Twenty-three-ten, this is essentially all new, uh, public participation at board meetings. The last update was in two thousand nine, and so this, um, this will bring the current, um, and if you look at the B, B, um, the public comment, that's the, you all, I hope you all read it, B, because that really is what's controlling the public comment. And the thing to remember, and the state statute makes it clear that you're here to do the business of education. So it's not, you're still here for the public, there's, your purpose is the business of education. So that's why the, um, you can have some limitations on public comment. And then I did a handout, public comment handout, so you pass this today, we'll pull out that last page, copy it, have it available. Because this is just a one-pageed statement of your new, of your revised policy. And, and I think that'd be good for the public to have, and you just have to do it. All right, um, homeless students, it gets revised fairly often. Um, the state tackles some of the students that are always in lies, homelessness, um, so the last time, it, it was just revised in twenty-eighteen. But, um, it adopts the North Carolina State Plan for Educated Homeless Children. And Lieutenant Wiggins is your contractor, um, person that implements this policy. And, um, it's, it's not as similar to what we're doing now. It's basically, um, being a little more lenient on homelessness. Just because their last, their car was parked in Cherokee County yesterday, doesn't mean, you know, they're in Ran County today, not to middle. So this expanded the definition of what homelessness is. Green County, I've been in Green County, been in Cherokee County last time, Swinney County, that type of thing. So it, it makes it a little more fluid about, um, the definition of homeless. So I'm sorry, that is Kristy Cable is actually our contact person, homeless. And she also works with that through, like, Tyler, when they set aside money for federal programs for students with homelessness. And we have a camp that we keep at all the schools, and, um, we, of course, you know, we're very fortunate in Grant County. There's not so many days we can take care of between the school system and the community. Really have students, and we, so we're very fortunate there. But we do have kids that are in a homeless situation, and we try to stay aware of that, and we update that. And I try to make sure we do them a little bit.
Do we have a broad number of homeless students?
Um, I would, in this headway, I answered that, she's going to go along for me.
Okay.
Um, I, I would say at any given time, we can work with, if I'm thirty kids. And, and the definition act is maybe a good displaced because of, uh, 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 maybe a financial situation. You might be doubled up with another parent that you don't have a, a place to live. You may still have temporary housing, uh, and, I mean, we've had some severe situations where we've had students that have been in a, um, you know, maybe a tent, or, uh, you know, maybe a, uh, maybe a phone with no power, and then, and so we try to stay aware of that. It's more of a BSS, and, um, everybody that we need to make sure we're willing to do with these kids. We don't want their, their life in that situation to be very, because they, they would need an education, like, maybe, um, you know, paying like fees if they're senior, like graduation, they need, or, uh, you know, the year of the, they, I mean, they're not the basic necessities, they need food. Probably, I mean, we had house students before, make sure, you know, the school has made in duration of the living, have housing. So we try to stay on that as much as we are aware.
Okay, this, um, okay, this is a conference, who signed up today? I signed up for a workshop conference.
Well, there's, there's not a change in my, I mean, I believe in our first chair.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sure.
I'm not sure.
And here, it's been my experience, um, with the school with their, their first families, because it's not as similar. Just regular role, maybe a six, and everything. And with the school, I don't know, students getting involved in that, so I have to, so. Community use of facilities, again, uh, this policy was amended in, uh, twenty-eighteen. But the reason for the amendment this time is that, um, the state authorized, um, boards of education to limit the use of community, um, limit the use by the community of facilities during emergencies like COVID. That's never been in, that's never been part of the state law on the community use of public facilities. So now with, um, um, the pandemic and any subsequent pandemic, there's some limitations that you're not, um, you do not have to have that particular group on campus at that particular time. If students are present, social, who are part of social studies, you don't bring more people on campus. And it's always, um, priority uses for the school, um. And then the other part is, um, nothing's changed about needing a certificate of insurance, general liability. None of that's changed, but just, um, make sure, um, that the waiver liability agreement, that you, um, put it over. We've used that one for a long time. And then you have an application, and they're the last two pages of the policy, is the application, um, that the community uses and, um, the waiver liability. Okay.
Twenty-three-ten.
Go ahead.
Can we go back to twenty-three-ten, just to get, um, the last thirty years, um, of participation in board meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm thinking a little clearer, um, on the thirty minutes. Is that, we had that situation, you had for ten minutes, Steve?
Actually, I only had to do for three.
Okay, good, but then the answer is, is what, is, is this part, is it, is this what this policy is saying? That she, that she really had thirty minutes to act on?
She said that?
No, it says, it says.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-three-ten.
I know, so under, under B, the first point, each paper will receive three minutes to come. However, most comments session, not receive thirty minutes totally. You don't.
It's simple, three minutes only.
No, it does not, you do a short period of time, and then jump. It says, is that, you don't have to, sure, in fifteen minutes, but it will not seek thirty. It's not that it has to be thirty every time, because the first step is to do your business, so, I mean, it's minutes. And if you want your session, particularly, one of your session leaders in the room is, have to have a charge of duty.
And, and, and we had that purchase fee that she went for, right? You weren't, right, obviously, you can't, right?
Okay, the numbers, you know, so, I mean, you can't do two minutes, to the next person, you don't have to.
So the question, I'm trying to be around.
As this policy.
As this policy was formed.
Yeah, right, I just wondered about that, because I'm curious about that, and you're, right, so.
Okay.
And also, the board chair, um, has, you know, a party to terminate, that's, this is, this is what you're telling me. I think this is what you're doing.
Disruptive, or, but it starts to become repetitive, and then.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the policy changes in Amendment's second reading for policy number thirteen twenty-three-five-sixty, Title One Parent Repairing, policy fifteen-ten, school safety, policy twenty-three-oh-two, remote participation in board meetings, policy twenty-three-ten, participation at board meeting, policy forty-one, twenty-five, all students, and policy fifty-thirty, community use of facilities. Do I have a motion to approve it? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, in your vote. That's all, yeah, all right. Do I have a motion to approve it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses A, parentheses three, and one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven, parentheses C, I move that the Grand County Ordination Fashion going to close session. To serve received advice from the Stella Bates, Attorney for Grand County Schools, Ordination Fashion, uh, which advice comes within review of the attorney client privilege. Advice will be generally legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina Statute four forty-three dash three eighteen eleven, C, parentheses C, I move that the Grand County Ordination Fashion going to close session for the purpose of considering close mail matters defined in and allowed by the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven, parentheses A, parentheses C, and the North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash three, go to work.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? In your vote. Okay, Ms. Knight, action items.
Uh, yes, I would recommend that the board affirm the following positions based on the completion of a memorandum of agreement with, um, our Native American program and Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians. Uh, I would recommend that you affirm the fulfillment of Cre Rockwood as a Cherokee language specialist.
Is that Rockwood or Rock?
Rockwood.
Rock. I'm sorry, I thought you were saying about.
And also, you have an onsite supervisor who could be here limited times, uh, Bo Taylor, to supervise that Cherokee language position. Again, this is pending the finalization of a memorandum of agreement with the staff.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Cre Rock, Rockwood as a Cherokee language teacher in the elementary, and Bo Taylor as a supervisor based on the memorandum of agreement with the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians? Prove it. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
I recommend that you approve Jake Beasley as a middle school social studies teacher.
Do I have a motion to approve Jake Beasley as a middle school social studies teacher? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you approve Kim Cox as a teacher assistant.
Do I have a motion to approve Kim Cox as a teacher assistant, uh, in the elementary students after red? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you approve Brooke Canning, Allison Groomes, William and, William Allen Rogers, and Billy Hyde as volunteers.
Do I have a motion to approve volunteers, Brooke Canning, Allison Groomes, Billy Hyde, and William Allen Rogers? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. What about the?
I'll put a word in this thing.
On this table, then.
And we'll do that, honestly.
All right. Do we have any announcements?
The announcements will be the week or next. Right now, the next meeting we have scheduled is a regularly scheduled meeting, August third, at ten a.m. I would request that you give me, as superintendent, the authority to call a special call meeting depending on the governor's press release, and if there's any action in the board where they can take regarding, uh, mask and the reopening of schools.
Okay, I need to put that in form of motion. Uh, do I have a motion to approve Ms. Knight to, uh, call a special call meeting in regard to the governor's, uh, speech today, this afternoon, on the, regarding the mask requirement?
If necessary.
If necessary. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Then, the next meeting's August third. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? I hope there's none opposed.